Good evening. It is seven o'clock on March ninth. This is our regularly scheduled Talmadge City Council meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody. Please note, before we really get going, the note on the top of our agendas, we will have an executive session before we adjourn this evening. And so we'll deal with that in a little bit. So we'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start this evening with our opening prayer and the pledge. And this evening, we have Pastor James Case from Talmadge Lutheran.
Will you pray with me, please? Dear Lord, as we prepare for this meeting, we ask and pray that you'll join with us and be with all the men and women present in all their positions of leadership, so that their decisions will be the betterment for the citizens of Talmadge, Ohio. As chaplain, I pray for the safekeeping of our police and our fire personnel, asking that you'll be with them in every call, so that they, as they help others, they will also help the people who need to know that you are with them. Bless us now. Be with us, watchovers, and give us your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Case. Mayor of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor. Let's go to roll call. Mrs. Burton.
Becky Allman.
Here.
Jonathan Bozak.
Mr. Bozak is on vacation.
Adam Bozak.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Carol Kilway.
Here.
Dennis Lowry.
Here.
Craig Cisak.
Here.
Thank you. We have six members in attendance this evening. Item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Lowry.
Ms. Kilway.
I move to adopt the 2/23/23 council meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cisak. Any corrections or additions, deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, Mrs. Burton, please call the roll.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Yes.
Minutes are adopted six to zero. Item five, financial reports. Fire and EMS fund transfer in the amount of $175,000. Street maintenance and repair fund transfer in the amount of $200,000 to council on 3/1/23. Appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending 2/28/23 to council on 3/3/23. February financial reports to council on 3/3/23. Talmadge Recreation Center profit and loss report for the period ending 2/28/23 to council on 3/3/23. The income tax comparisons for the period ending 2/28/23 to council on 3/3/23. Consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending 2/28/23 to council on 3/3/23. Income tax by source report for the month of February to council on 3/3/23. Revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ended 2/28/23 to council on 3/3/23. Entertained a motion to accept these financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Cisak, second by Mrs. Allman. Any discussion or questions on the report? Hearing none. Mrs. Burton.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Financial reports are accepted six to zero. Item six, public hearings have none. Item seven, community input. So this is the time in our meeting where if someone in the audience would like to speak to council on anything that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do that. Just come to the podium, state your name and address, make your comments to me as the chair, and you have two minutes. Would anyone like to do that this evening? Sir?
Thank you. My name is Paul Evans, 417 Northwest Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
I'd like to make note of the narrowness of the streets on Northwest Avenue, and I'm sure there's other streets here. I've observed some, with the increase of the new developments down there where the old Talmadge Springs, Bakers-Akers area is, there's a lot more traffic, foot traffic, bicycle traffic, and so forth. I've had a recent occasion where I'm out front, and there's a woman pushing a baby carriage. I have to, and she's asking to come through my yard because there's not enough room for her to walk along the streets. There's just not enough room. I've seen on another occasion a woman pushing a baby carriage very quickly across the street because there's just no, there's no room for them to walk. Another occasion, right in front of my house, a neighbor across the street had lawn care company, I mean, they're delivery trucks. People, you have to cross the double yellow line. There's people backed up. A landscaping company had their setup in front of my house, mowing the yard across the street. Traffic was backed up, past Evergreen, and around, going down the hill. School bus was dropping off kids in front of the neighbor's house next door, so there's traffic backed up from the school bus. The school bus then proceeds to go up to Evergreen to drop off kids. But in the meantime, somebody took it upon themselves to break the line of traffic and try to go and make a turn onto Evergreen. Luckily, the school bus stopped, and there wasn't a head-on collision. I think something needs to be done to widen the streets in those areas. I mean, I won't get into the fact that there's a moat in front of my house and a big drop-off where people would fall off into the culvert in front of my house. But there's not enough room for the foot traffic and bicycle traffic, which is increasing exponentially every day. And all the delivery trucks, there's no way. I mean, I understand that you got a double yellow line there. It's, you're not supposed to cross those lines unless you have to. And that's when, but people are constantly having to do that now, and it's getting more and more and more with all the delivery trucks, the mail trucks, the garbage trucks. It's just getting very, very dangerous for foot traffic and people. And with the increase in number of people, there has to be something done. Extend the berms, make it wide enough so somebody can pull off at least half a lane. It has to be done safer. I have other things, but I think that's the main issue I have to talk about this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Evans? Service Director's here. He heard what you said. So, as did the mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for coming in. All right. Item eight, agenda additions. We have none. Item nine, reports of administrative officers. We'll start with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off with, don't forget, next Wednesday's the State of the City. If you've not, if you plan on attending, make sure you left the chamber office or the council office or the mayor's office. That is next Wednesday at the venue. And then next Thursday at Talmadge Rotary, I'm doing it at 7:15. And then on the 21st, at the Primetimers. So I'll be doing it three times in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure. And then I will also, like I've done in the past, do it in council chambers for all the city employees that want to come for lunch, and I'll provide them pizza and that to show up. I'm setting up a meeting with Brimfield to go over the JED map here in council chambers. And I'll let some of the council folks that have inquired about that. Mike Ladd is looking at his calendar, and he's willing to come in to talk about some of the zoning stuff over there in the JED. As soon as I get that scheduled, I'll make sure that some of you council will be aware of that. The Talmadge Expo is April 15th, starting at nine o'clock on that Saturday, and it ends at three o'clock. If you've, if you want to be part of some of the booths, the city will have their booth out front. And I'm sure it'll be a busy day. There's still some booths available at the rec center. So you can see the chamber office or talk to Becky. The Joint Dispatch Centers, I was at the construction meeting today. It's really moving along pretty nice. Let me just give you, I have a couple photos that I took there. And what a great repurpose of that corner building. You know, it was the Weaver Workshop. It's been gutted out, and now it's being re-drywalled. I just wanted to show this picture here. That is the ramp going into the dispatch area. Piece of the raised floor and all the electric that goes underneath the floor in that. That's actually inside of the cog side of it. The Akron Center is on the other side of the wall. So this is the cog, which is made up of Stowe, Cog Falls, Fairlawn, Talmadge, and Summit County as the prime contractors, as the prime cog members. And then there's several communities that will be contracted to the cog. So pretty excited about how that's all coming together. Shoot, I just shut the other one off. The Talmadge Fire Department, I'm happy to announce that we did receive our temporary occupancy this week. And the guys are pretty excited about that because they're already moving in. So, so I don't know if you, if I, at the last council meeting, showed some of the camera views that are now available. This is the back of the building, and from the camera that's been out front for the longest time. And that's what you see on YouTube live. But now, some of the cameras are active. The camera on the building facing the old fire station, when that is demoed, then you'll see the intersection pretty nice, and you can actually zoom into different areas of it and watch that intersection from that building. And then the back, again, the back of the building. And the front lobby area. It's hard to see because of the sun glare. But the temporary occupancy was received on Monday. The fire prevention has moved in already. And then the main guys plan on having them move in on March 17. And the temporary doors are up and functioning very well. The primary doors are still working through the legal aspect of that with the law department. And a request of ordinance 2023-40, that is the demo grant for Station Two. If you remember, at the last council meeting, I talked to you, and I did forward a note to council requesting that. We did receive two grants for that. The federal grant, and then the other grant that we get a matching grant through our local demo program. So at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, the $19,000 demo for that building should cost the city roughly about $3,000. So it's a good, good for us. But it is money I have to spend, and it's a reimbursement grant, just like the DD building. We also received that grant. And there's legislation here tonight on that also. End of report.
Anything for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Klein. Dr. Cooper's not here this evening.
He is in training tonight.
He did, everyone should have received a written report pertaining to the police study and follow-up. Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr.
Good evening. First, I'd like to request that ordinance 2023-42 be considered for being passed at first reading tonight. I'd appreciate that. For the month, we had 20 total permits issued, 11 of which were zoning certificates. Keep in mind that those are the fencing and decks, and that's what zoning certificates are. Code violations are 34, 13 of which were property disrepair. The cemetery, nine total burials, seven of which were full, two cremains. We actually sold our first niche in the new columbariums, which is part of the columbarium plaza. The, in the parks, the membership there, you can see that 7,437 is 500 more than last year, which is always moving in the right direction since COVID's come and gone, kind of. And then the visits is up about 17% from the year previous. We had the first family fun night since COVID, and we had 675 in attendance. And you can see the upcoming events. The Girl Scout Daddy-Daughter Game Night, March 9th, Princess Tea Party, March 19th, Spring Break Camp, March 27th, and the Easter Egg Scramble, April 8th at 10:00 a.m. The community center is still closed. That was due to that pipe that bursted on December 26. We're still on schedule to open April 1st. I'll probably be coming to you with a change order. Right now, the ceiling in the kitchen needs to be replaced. It was not part of the insurance. But with all the new ceiling being done, that ceiling looks terrible right now. And so we're probably looking about a $5,000. It's about $4,700 to replace that ceiling. It should get done. It just didn't hit the insurance. And then hopefully, we're good. But we're dialing in the bead board. That's the area below the chair rail. And I think we're good, but you never know because that'll be different than what we normally have had. So I might be coming with you for a change order for that as well. So I'll keep you posted. And then there you can see the McAppul's. Membership's been going on for the residents, and then March 15th starts the non-residents. Go back to it. The Winter Wonderland Dance, February 11th, and that was the second year for that. And pretty good attendance. We had 150 people there in attendance. Street Department, street sweeping is occurring in all our municipal lots from our second shift. And they've been trying to work till nine o'clock because that's the news, the noise ordinance. And what that is, is by the EPA, it's a mandate that we have to sweep all our lots at least twice a year. And while the winter shifts, and it's the best time to do it because there shouldn't be anybody parked in the parking lots in the evening hours after dusk. So if you're hearing any complaints or hearing anybody saying anything about it, it is us, but it should, we should be done in one night in each parking lot. We should be out of there. And we're trying to cut it off by nine. So with that being said, we had 262 hours, believe it or not, in snow and ice control in the month. I don't know what days those were, but we had that 9.42 tons of street sweepings was removed. 100 lineal feet of ditching was done. Three culverts were jetted. Two culverts were replaced. And we started trimming the vegetation, blocking the stop signs. That's the only vegetation that we don't have to ask for the property owner's permission or send a letter because it's a safety issue. So that's actually an ORC rule that any, and there's a rule with the speed of the road, you got to be able to see that stop sign from so many feet back. So if it's 35, you got to 25, you know. So we try to measure all that stuff up. So if you hear anything about us cutting limbs, yes, that's true, and we're just doing it just because it's a safety issue. Next one. The utility department, there again, zero water main breaks, great job. Zero backups in the sewer, great job. Four water valves were repaired. 7,306 lineal feet of sanitary sewer was televised. And I'm going to credit the work that they've been doing with that to prevent the sanitary sewers from backing up. And what we have there in the picture, that's a cutting head when they do find calcium deposits in those lines. Those are 12-inch lines that has nine blades on the front of it. It's ran by water, 1,600 PSI on it. And believe it or not, West Avenue had almost two inches of calcium that was as hard as concrete to get out of there. But that, that cutting head blew that out of there. So great job from the utility department. Lastly, North Monroe sidewalk, APA, ARPA funding. And right there in the red is the sidewalk on North Monroe from East Avenue to the roundabout. And you can see it's a segmented piece of sidewalk there. And what the ARPA funds is going to do is make the connections. So the green area is what it's going to connect. And the reason why we switch sides, it's twofold. You can see down there by Bentley Place and Regency, not Bentley Place, but Regency and Clark Avenue. There was a sidewalk there already, so we wanted to connect. On the other side of the road, the grade's bad. So think of, keep in mind those big beech trees and the, and the rock wall that's there. So you'd be, if you stayed on the opposite side, you'd be cutting in those and probably removing those giant trees. And I'm sure that would be quite a bit of hoopla. So I don't, we don't want to go there. We will have a crossing, one more spin, right there. And we'll probably put up the sidewalk or the crosswalk flashers at that location. So, and that ends my report. If there's any questions?
Anything for Mr. Rohr?
I do have one thing. And thank you for that report. The On Washburn Road, it's the road I live on, so I see this the most. But we have quite a few mailboxes that keep getting taken out, not by our city guys, but by drivers. There's a long stretch of straight followed by multiple quick turns or sweeping turns. And I think we have some drivers that are a little over aggressive on those turns. I know right now, my parents' neighbor, they have their mailbox missing. I think there's two others on an actual straight that have mailboxes that have been replaced. I guess what can we do as a city to help, I don't know, monitor that better? Or what can we do, basically?
Send the police out there to ticket people speeding.
Mr. Cisak asked if there was signage. There's some signage for speed, speed limit signs.
Curves ahead.
Just arrows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chevrons, maybe.
It sits marked properly.
Speed humps.
Well, what I'm also finding too is because of the light now, you have people that come up over the crest of the hill, which is where I'm at. And they see the light's green, and they gun it, trying to make it all the way down on the end of Washburn. So you have cars that are doing like 80 down Washburn, trying to catch the light. I'm sure I've been guilty of maybe not going that far, but definitely not 80. But at least trying to catch a light. I'm sure I've been guilty of that. But I guess if we can do something to, you know,
We'll send a note to the
Set up the speed
Trailer.
Trailer or something. I just know that it's, it worries me just even in the morning time when my kids get on the bus because I live right there on that crest, too. So just something to think about. I know that we've had quite a few incidents recently, so.
And I'll double check the signage, make sure that there are enough speed limit signs and make sure there is warning signs. I believe there is, but I'll just double check.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. If you would, please pass on to Mrs. Hussing that I really appreciate her zoning department reports. They are extremely informative and helpful.
Yes, she does a great job. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Rohr? Ms. Kilway?
Just to kind of add on to what Mr. Bozak was stating, I did receive a phone call from a resident in the last week or two about speeding in Talmadge. And he is, he is a bus driver for the city and for the school system. And he just, he sees people speeding and distracted driving constantly. And he is asking very nicely if we could get some type of enforcement going on in the city when it comes to speeding. So I'm just passing that along to the administration.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we'll go to Director of Finance, Mrs. Gilbreth.
Good evening. Thank you. Everyone should have received the February financial reports. Our income tax is still looking good so far this year, so we'll keep our eye on that. But withholdings seem to still be coming in strong for us. Our business, net profit taxes are a little behind right now, but it's still early in the year. And a lot of times, a lot of that's just timing differences that we have going on. My office is in full swing with the audit. So you may or may not receive communications. I, they don't, usually if they want to communicate with the council, it's directly through, directly to you. So just for your awareness. And if you could, please respond promptly to them if they do get in touch with you. I would greatly appreciate it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has anything specific about the financial reports.
Mrs. Gilbreth?
Yes.
I read an article, I guess about a week ago, of the impact of the reduction in the cat tax and how that was negatively impacting Twinsburg. Do you know how that should impact us? I mean, Twinsburg has a whole lot more manufacturing and things like that, but.
I mean, we have not gotten cat tax money for oh, it's longer than that. It's, I
For some reason, they may have
I don't know if Twinsburg maybe was getting so much that they had some kind of grace period. But I, I would have to go back and look. But that was phased out in the early 2000s.
I thought so.
So I'm not, I did not see that article, so I can look into what that was about and see if there's any impacts that would, would be on us.
Anything else for Mrs. Gilbreth? All right. Mrs. Raiber, Director of Law.
Thank you. Just want to do one last reminder that we are hosting both Summit County Councilperson Christine Hyam and myself have invited Sheri Bevan Walsh, Prosecutor Sheri Bevan Walsh, to do the Women's Self-Defense Class. And that's the 16th, March 16th. It's a Thursday at the rec center from about 6:00 to 8:00. It's free. You do not need to pre-register. It'll be on Court Four. So just come into the rec center and let them know that that's why you're there, and they will have you come back. We've gotten questions about whether children are able to attend. And really, it depends on the age of the child. They're welcome as long as they can hold their attention for two hours. There are some, you know, instructional pieces to it beyond just the active part of it, too. So all are welcome.
Thank you. Anything for Mrs. Raiber? So, Mrs. Gilbreth, I had to get back to the Twinsburg article. It came back to me that the article was about the impact on the school district. And it was reason used a justification for a layoff because their property tax income has been reduced. That was the crux of the article. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to reports of standing committees. And we will start with planning and zoning. Ms. Kilway?
Thank you. I'll open the Planning and Zoning Committee. We have in front of us ordinance 2023-34. We do have a public hearing on that on April the 13th of '23 at 7:01 p.m. It is amending the zoning map by rezoning the property of applicant Tom Meehan for GT Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Pora LLC owner located at 51 Southeast Avenue, parcel 6000098,
for GT Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Pora LLC owner located at 51 Southeast Avenue, parcel 6000098, consisting of approximately 0.3884 acres from Industrial District I-1 to General Commercial District C-3 and approving the existing general development plan. This was in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission last week and they did a thorough, very thorough job of going over everything. They did consider whether the applicant provided adequate evidence that the proposed district change was consistent with the applicable standards as listed, and it was unanimous of all of the, all of the standards they agreed on them, except one did not apply. And then they did give us a recommendation to adopt five to zero. So is there any discussion on this? We do need to amend it and it will go back to second reading. So is there any discussion on this at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have a question related to the parking.
Yes.
It says in the report that we got, which by the way, these are very detailed. I appreciate these. These are great. Talks about needing eleven spaces.
Right.
For parking. Just wanted to confirm that that does not include any of the spots that are on Erie on the, what, west side of Erie that are.
The public parking.
For public parking.
Right, no, they were.
Does not include any of those.
Not including.
And they do have a lot of space that they could add more parking, but they would have to go back to planning zoning for that request.
Mm-hmm.
This is really the zoning portion of it.
So, cause that was my, yeah, cause in the image it says additional future parking. So that is not currently part of the.
I, it is not, it met the, the plan, site plan that they presented met the code.
Okay.
I think they're going to need more parking in the future.
I would, I would think so. I just.
But they have room to add it and they would come back for it if they need to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything, any other further discussion on this? If none, I would entertain a motion to amend the ordinance.
Second.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, a little backwards, but I think it works, to amend Please call the roll.
Carol.
I'm sorry. Oh, any further discussion? I'm sorry. Let's forget.
I apologize for being out of order.
What else is next?
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cissick.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozek.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Okay, so ordinance 2023-34 has been amended by a vote of six to zero. It'll go back to second reading and then they'll be back in for the public hearing on April thirteenth. Anything else to come in front of planning and zoning at this time? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilway. Finance, Mr. Sisak?
Thank you. I'd like to call Finance to order. We currently have ordinance 2023-36. At second reading, it's authorizing the mayor to contract with Insight Advisory Group LLC for economic development consulting services without competitive bidding, appropriating the necessary funds and providing for immediate enactment. Anyone have any comments on this?
Well, the ma, the mayor didn't ask, but.
No.
But I would be, I would be in favor of adopting this at second reading. No one wants to come work in that role from another, no one with experience from someone, from someplace else for eight or nine months, however much longer it is. And I'm very familiar with Insight and, and the work that they do, so I, I would be in favor of this, this evening.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I did have a question before that motion. So, and I agree, I think that that could be a very hard spot to fill considering, but, you know, this is an area that I would, I would think there's probably multiple agencies or vendors available that specialize in this sort of thing. Is, do we?
There's not a lot, but I mean, like Mr. Lowry said, Insight, they do it for other communities. They've done a great job. I've known the guy that's going to work for Talmage that he does. He used to be a part of the Akron teams and that. I think they'll do a great job on doing this work for the city of Talmage.
So, well, my, so my question was, are we aware of other vendors that.
And it.
Offer similar services? Did we, did we seek out, do kind of just a comparison of?
I did not go out and get solicit quotes. This is a professional services that I'm allowed to enter into contract based on council, the appropriation of it. I've known this company. I think the price, I think it's good. It's going to be twenty-five hours a month, up to twenty-five hours. And if they have to go over that, then it will be negotiated with us to, to go further on that. They're providing guidance on development efforts, any open land that's available to bring in clients, outside vendors to come to those sites, redevelopment of properties, business retention, going out with me, with Helene. Helene and I have been doing a lot of that, business retentions, knocking on doors and setting up meetings, going out to vendors and.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would agree with Mr. Lowry that this is something that I think we should do. We don't, you know, we don't have a designated person right now. The faster we can get this moving, I think would be better.
Is that a motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
So move to adopt ordinance 2023-36 at second reading?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2023-36 at second reading. Is there any discussion on this? So it's $60,000 for the remainder of the year, it appears. And that's for twenty-five hours per month?
Yes, and we're actually moving the appropriation, so we're moving the money out of salaries that we had appropriated to hire, and we're just moving that down into the contractual section.
How much money do, are we moving? The sixty?
The sixty, yeah. So we're not adding sixty to the budget. We're just moving it from one category of expense to another.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification.
And, and for clarification, that was from the personnel portion.
Correct, because we added in personnel.
Having an individual fill that spot, okay.
Correct, so we're moving it out of personnel and down into the operating expenses.
And then how do we, and you had mentioned twenty-five hours roughly a month, and then if we exceed that, is that, do we know what that rate is for the additional hours?
Yes, we do.
Cause twenty-five sounds like a lot, but then I'm thinking, you know, that, that could be three visits, four visits a month roughly.
I don't anticipate them, unless we get a big project coming in to go over that. I want to try to maintain and keep it at the twenty-five. I do not really want to exceed that. These are the, the money will not be there. The hourly rate, it's like fifty dollars an hour for them to, to go out individually after they exceed that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cissick.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozek.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-36 has been adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
First reading ordinances and resolutions, we have ordinance 2023-38. It's accepting the ARPA First Responders Wellness Recruitment, Retention and Resiliency Grant from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency, authorizing the creation of an OMEA ARPA Fires Responder Grant Fund, appropriating and advancing necessary funds and providing for immediate enactment.
I apologize. I did send an email to ask for this at first reading so we can sign the grant agreement and move forward. We have, we've been awarded these funds. We have until December of 2024 to spend, spend them. They will be spent, as explained, in the ordinance for physical scans, health and wellness for our firefighters in the fire department.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Within the ordinance, it talks about physical scans, behavioral health training, wellness program. Does that include like exercise equipment or, or things like that?
No, it's actual for, like, the behavioral health is like training and like wellness training for them. So no, it does not include actual any.
Mostly like consulting type.
Yes, yes.
Instructional.
Yes, yes.
Not thing, yeah.
Professional services.
Services, yes, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sisak?
Yes, ma'am.
And if I, I have two questions here. First question, is this going to be for all of the firefighters, part-time and full-time, or is it just the full-time?
I'm gonna have to get clarification. I believe it is for all of them, but I will have to clarify that.
Based on that, I might have to recuse myself from this since my husband would be a beneficiary of this. Is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you. And then my other comment on it would be when it says scans and physical.
Mrs. Kilway, you, you can't make any comment if you abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was, okay.
I, I have an additional question.
Go ahead.
How are we going to administer this program? Are we, are we paying those professional services or are the firefighters being reimbursed?
No, we will actually have to, these are federal funds and the guidelines that we received from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency are very strict and intensive, so these will be actual contracts that the city will enter into for the firefighters to go. So they will not have a choice of where. It will be a standardized process that we contract with.
And it's not a, not a reimbursement thing on their part?
No, this will be paid directly.
It's a city organized.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sisak?
Oh, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the one piece that is kind of interesting is the recruitment aspect. You know, again, it seems like a lot of this is around the current department members. So I just wondered, you know, the recruitment aspect of it, what's.
So there is another portion of this grant that we have not been awarded yet.
Oh, I got you, okay.
That actually, it's not, it says it's recruitment, but it's also a retention portion. So they're, they're still, they've reviewed the wellness portion and have awarded those portions of the grants.
Okay.
But applications for the retention and the recruitment portions are still under review.
Gotcha.
So we could come back if we do receive additional funding.
Okay.
For additional appropriation for this.
Understood, thank you. Mr. Lowry?
Thank you, Mr. Sisak. So Mrs. Gilbrandt, sometimes when, when cities take federal money, grants, awards, whatever, sometimes there are restrictions or things tied to that that may not be beneficial to the city. Do you, do you see any, any misgivings at all about taking this money?
Um, no, I mean, I think there are going to be a lot of steps we're going to have to go through to, to spend it. The contracting rules that we're going to be under require are a little more extensive than we would normally have to go through because it's federal dollars, but overall, I don't see any, you know.
You don't have to hire fifteen new firefighters.
No, this is, this is serving our current population of firefighters and I think, you know, providing anything to help them with health and wellness is, is a good thing for the city.
Thank you.
Good. Can I have a motion, please?
I have one additional question. Sorry, I'm full of questions tonight.
You're fine.
So because you mentioned that the recruitment retention portion may not be part of this, should we omit those words from this ordinance then?
Well, no, that's the name of the grant.
That's the name of the grant.
That's the name of the grant. We just have not, we, we submitted two pieces. One was the wellness portion and then another is recruitment, but the, the whole entire name of the grant.
Okay.
Is that. So if we do come back, the na, we've already accepted the grant. All we would be doing is accepting the additional funds and appropriating the additional monies.
Okay.
All right, now can I get a motion, please?
I'd move to adopt ordinance 2023-38 at first reading.
Second.
So a motion is second to adopt ordinance 2023-38 at first reading. Is there any further Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Craig Cissick.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozek.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Abstain.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
So ordinance 2023-36 is passed by a vote of five to zero to one abstention. Moving on, ordinance 2023-39 is authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to enter into contract for the replacement of the culvert and deteriorating storm sewer on Elton Drive and providing for immediate enactment. Service Director Rohr, was this one of the ones you wanted passed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Moving on then, we have ordinance 2023-40. It's appropriating necessary sums for the demolition of 735 Eastwood Avenue and providing for immediate enactment. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
So a motion is second to adopt ordinance 2023-40 at first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mayor's clients about the demo.
Yeah, this is station two.
Get rid of a blight. About it.
Do we have a date?
The first is what we're trying to schedule. It takes at least two weeks after tonight if council chooses to adopt this and we could turn it over to our contractor. He has a two-week period that he has to apply to EPA for the demo. That gives the guys time to move out and gives the fire department and time to play in it, meaning they can do some training in there, cut holes, knock walls, and then turn it over to us to demo it.
Okay. Do we have any worry that the temporary occupancy of the new building will become an issue, that we may not be able to renew that or may not be able to stay in there for any?
We would have received the permanent occupancy, but since there's plywood on the two doors, the temporary doors, or there's no doors on the middle, the Summit County guys said it's temporary. So as soon as we get a, either the permanent doors installed on those two doors, we'll get permanent.
Thanks.
Mr. Sisak?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, is there a, is there a length of time that you're limited to on a temporary?
No.
Okay.
We're setting it with our.
Right, but we're, but we're not worried about ninety-day limit or a hundred and twenty-day limit or anything like that. Thank you.
All life safety stuff is done and passed and that's how they can move in.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozek.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cissick.
Yes. Ordinance 2023-40 has been approved by a vote of six to zero. We have ordinance 2023-41. It's authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to enter into contract for demolition of 89 East Howe Road, appropriating necessary sums and providing for immediate enactment. Was this another one you wanted? No? Are you sure?
We didn't, I mean, we'll take it, but it's, it's a larger appropriation.
Yeah. All right, let's take a look at that one. Is that okay with everyone?
Well, the ordinance is just allowing the Director of Public Service to advertise, so I, I would just assume adopt the.
It's appropriating a million dollars.
Twenty-five percent.
Oh, I thought we were just entering into getting.
Appropriating, this is a, the grant that we received is a reimbursement grant and it's seventy-five percent. We pay twenty-five percent and the grant will pay seventy-five percent, up to one million dollars.
Yeah.
We think it's going to come in less than that, but it's okay to give it a second.
Yeah, I don't want to appropriate a million on first reading.
No. When do, when do you expect to have the, the final cost estimate?
We won't until, we have to go out to public bid. This is a bid because it's going to exceed. We have engineer's estimate of, it'll be slight, it'll be less than a million dollars because we had in there for asbestos when we applied for the grant and we think there's very, very little asbestos inside that building, so that portion may be removed. But since we received the grant for the one million, that's what the reappropriation's
I have a question on this.
Yes, ma'am.
When we do adopt this ordinance and appropriate the million dollars and then we have the demolition and we pay all of it upfront, how soon do we get our seventy-five Is it like two, three months? Is it six months? Is it a year until we get the reimbursement?
Well, this grant, and I'm working with the county land bank on it regarding that. There is a provision that I read that they're looking into where we actually may be able to apply for reimbursement. Once we enter into the contract, this grant is looking at that as your commitment of funds, so they have not gotten back to me on that. But usually the land bank is pretty timely and, I mean, I'm comf, we, we have enough funds available.
Right.
To cover it, so I'm not concerned. But usually I would say sixty days max.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and give that a first reading this evening.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question for the mayor. Is there a vendor through any of the open government sources? I'm at a loss for what the collective bargaining or contracts that we can use through the state that we won't have to put it out to public bid? State purchasing, that's it, thank you.
No, there's not.
There is none.
It has to be a public bid.
Okay.
Now, there's certain, there's like three firms that are certified through the state that do the demo and I would think all three firms would. state that do the demo, and I would think all three firms would, uh, apply.
Okay.
Or pull the application.
All right, thanks.
The bid packet.
Okay, moving on, we have, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, it's declaring city-owned vehicles, personal property, and equipment to be excess obsolete and authorizing the Director of Public Service to sell such equipment at public sale or auction, providing for immediate enactment.
Counselman?
Yes, sir.
This is the one that I would like to.
I didn't want to skip over you, you know.
I appreciate that.
You got it. Um, so can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
So a motion is second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Seacock?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question. Um, looking through the itemization list, um, is, is there, it says there's tornado sirens and control boxes. Can we use those at all? Not at all.
We took them down.
We took them all down.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what about?
To Mr. Rensel's chagrin.
Traffic lights.
They weren't working.
They're, they're used, there, there's something.
They're junk.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's all, I was just checking, checking.
It must be that seat.
It is that seat, yes. I know exactly who you're referring to. I'm all about using if we can.
Under the, uh, the office equipment section, that includes all of those.
Cubicles.
Cubicles, the, all, basically anything that was left in there from our walk-through, correct?
Yep, correct.
Okay, now hearing any further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Seacock.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
All right, ordinance four, uh, twenty twenty-two dash forty-two has been adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before finance this evening? Hearing none, I will close committee, thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Let's move to personnel. Uh, Mr. Bozak.
Thank you. Uh, we'll open Personnel Committee. Um, we currently have no legislation in front of us. I'll open it up to the administration, anyone on council.
Abstain.
No? Uh, hearing none, I will, well, I do have one question. Um, I know we were talking, um, briefly about, uh, what kind of plans we have for, um, our police department as far as, um, a retention or recruitment, uh, type thing. Um, do we have anything in the, in the works currently?
I know Dr. Cooper's been working on, uh, the bid document or the, going out to. Job posting, and that is, I think, completed and ready to go out. Uh, one through the, uh, Ohio sourcing thing that he was, same thing that Cogge Falls did, but he's not here to, I'll have him follow up with you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And give you that information.
Uh, hearing no other, uh, input, I will close Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Uh, Community Issues, Mrs. Gutman?
Thank you, I will, uh, open Community Issues. We have a second reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, uh, an emergency ordinance to accept the new national opioid settlements, Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and providing for immediate enactment. Um, are we keeping this at second reading, or did we want?
Uh, no, we actually have a deadline, um, in early April to respond, and so, uh, because of the recess in council, I would ask for second reading adoption this evening. Um, I had provided a attorney-client privilege memorandum, um, with regard to it. I hadn't heard any questions from any council people, so hopefully, um, you're satisfied with the information you've received.
Okay, in that case, um, could I have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, should you please call the roll?
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Seacock.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Thank you, um, ordinance is adopted six to zero. Okay, uh, and we have nothing further for Community Issues. Is there anything from anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
Thank you. Move to Safety, Mr. Bozak.
Thank you. Um, we have tonight, uh, first reading, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, urging the legislative branches of the federal government, as well as the state of Ohio, to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the city of Towage, Ohio, from the inherent dangers of a train derailment on tracks located within or near our city in declaring an emergency, uh, sponsored by our administration and council. I will.
So I have lived here almost my entire life, and I had to ask whether we actually have any active railroad tracks, and we do. So we, um, we do have them still within our city, um, and so, uh, Ohio Municipal League has sent this out to encourage us. Really, municipalities do not have, um, or preempted from doing much with railroads or regulating railroads in any way. Um, it's primarily federal, and then I think the state is going to see or try to do some things potentially, um, on their end, so I just think it's a collective, um, effort by municipalities to try to make their voices heard, um, after the East Palestine, um, issue, and there was also a second one, without the same type of, um, level of, um, clammy, but another one that had also happened recently.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would move to adopt at first reading.
Second.
We have a, uh, motion and a second. Uh, open it up for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Bozak, I, I would just ask, there, there's nothing in the ordinance, uh, I'm asking, that you think, uh, might be beneficial for us holding this to, uh, so that we could get, uh, further comment, maybe from some residents or the public?
What's the press?
Or are we safe just to adopt this this evening?
You're welcome to. I mean, there's really not a definitive timeline on, on this, you're welcome to hold it over. Um, I don't know if anybody would have any comments, but we're, you know, that'd be fine too on this one, there's not like a tight deadline or anything.
I, I, I'm all right with adopting it, because we're, it's, it's a good thing. I, I just didn't want to, uh, you know, this is a, this is a hot topic right now. I didn't want to make it look like we were rushing to do something, and then someone has something to say at our next meeting, that's all.
I don't think the conversation will end here.
Right, I, I agree. I, I actually was gonna have a question about that, um, about the, I know we may not have much restrictions that we can put on, on the railroads, but, um, specifically like at Eastwood, where the track crosses, um, I don't believe we have any crossing, uh, gates that come down, uh, at those locations, and it is a bit of a hill if you're coming from east to west. So I didn't know if that's something that is city enforced, if we can require that, or can we, can we ask why we don't have one there? Uh, who do we go through to find out on something like that?
It's federal. I mean, we could put the request in, and I think we could actually offer to pay for it. I think we did that down on Southeast Avenue, if I recall, and I'm dating myself on that crossing.
Right.
It's, it's been a while.
Yeah, and I've, I've only handled one, um, exemption, and it was a whole process to go through that, and that is necessary to have signs be able to be posted that say it's a railroad exemption, so that school buses don't have to stop.
Middlebury Road.
And we did that on a Middlebury. Um, so it's, it's a whole process, we can, you know, look into that.
Right.
If we think, I mean, if we think that's, I'm not even, I'm trying to think.
I, I, I think that it's worthwhile looking into, at least, and maybe determining whether or not we've had near misses or incidents in that area. Um, I know, back in my day during high school, that was the railroad track that everyone tried to launch off of when they would come speeding down Eastwood, so, um, because it is a bit of a, a little ramp there. I never participated in that, but I'm, I knew a lot of people, so, um, so I think that might be something that, uh, if we could find out if there's been accidents in that area, near misses.
We've got a report for you for that intersection.
So, thank you. So I believe we have a, uh, a motion to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, and we have a second. Any other discussion? No? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Seacock.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
All right, we have a, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash four passes with a vote of six to zero. Um, currently have no other, uh, legislation in front of us. Uh, do I have any other input from council, administration? Hearing none, I will close the Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak. Uh, Public Service, Mrs. Allman?
I call the Public Service Committee to order. We have no legislation before us this evening. Does anyone have anything for the Public Service Committee?
I have one, one comment. Um, I know we've, we, we all are aware of the increase in the water bills, um, and I've, I've heard from a couple of, uh, citizens just in passing and in general conversation about the increase being fairly significant. Um, what can we do as a city to help maybe mitigate that cost? Is there a program we can put out there that talks about water, water conservation, um, different things like that, just as a reminder to our citizens, you know, here's some tips and hints on how you can, you know, lower your water bill?
There's, um, we can look at that, keep in mind that's the sanitary part of it. The water part of the bill is not the, the issue, it's the sanitary, it's the treatment of that water. And, uh, the city's been doing, um, a lot of work, 'cause, as Daryl, the, uh, Steiman Utility Superintendent was in here, I think probably three or four months ago, and it's everything that's, uh, goes through the water that they have to treat, and it's a gallons of water that they have to treat, and, uh, we've done a really good job in reducing a lot of that, uh, ourselves, but there again, in homes and at the, and at the businesses, they gotta watch what they're doing, you know, the grease going down the drain, um, the, the, the oddity of the odd, you know, only toilet paper should be going down your drain, but it's, it's all the, it's all the weird substances that they throw down there, blue jean, I mean, I don't even know how they get them down their toilets, let alone how the stuff gets. So, i- at home, so we could put something out there for sure, um, but it, it's really what you're putting down your drain, and that, that'll, it's, that's how we get billed so heavy, it's, it's that treatment of the sanitary, not the water itself.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for the Public Service Committee? Seeing none, I close committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Allman. Uh, we'll go to item eleven, reports to special committees. Additional items, so today, uh, I worked with both Mrs. Burton and Mrs. Conti, and we finalized, uh, their job descriptions and got them to, uh, miss a stretch under the deadline, so, so that was good. Uh, announcements, uh, Superintendent Wood, uh, told Rotary this morning that the cell tower on the, uh, the school property, uh, by the football stadium will be installed by the end of March and hoping to be operational, uh, by late summer with, uh, at least one carrier, but anticipated to have several carriers. So are there any other announcements? Hearing none, we will entertain, uh, a motion, uh, to go in executive session for the purpose of discussing pending court action and sale of property.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do we need to have discussion on that, Mrs. Ray? Any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Mrs. Burton, please call the roll.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Seacock.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
So it was, uh, motion to go in the executive session was six to zero. Uh, for those in the audience, the time is eight oh five. Uh, for those in the audience, we will not, uh, take any action when we come back, other than to adjourn only, and that is the same for you that are live streaming, so thank you very much.
I'm gonna stay here.
I'm gonna stay here.
There is nothing else on the agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Bozick and Mr. Cisak.
Second.
Ms. Burton, please call the roll.
Dennis Lowery.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Becky Allman.
Yes.
Jonathan Bullis. Oh, I'm sorry. Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gepman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Good meeting. Just a reminder, we will not have our second meeting this month. It will be spring break. So enjoy your time off everybody. Meeting is adjourned. 8:42.